Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 18, 2025 meeting for the Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees. I am President Eric Fong. With me are Vice President Gina Steiner and fellow trustee Marwan Cameron. Eric Sisney and Monica Blackwood are out on excused absences tonight. So we'll go to the Kitsap Regional Library Mission Statement. Marwan?
Inspiring curiosity and connection.
Thank you. Jason, welcome in introductions, please.
Yes, hi. Good evening. With me tonight is Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries, Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation. Wendy Kyle's not here. Mike Rose, Director of Facilities and IT, is excused tonight in his place as Joyce, who will be handling all of the technical duties. Thank you, Joyce. Also with us is Jeannie Allen, the Director of Strategy and Communications. We have Shannon Peterson, Deputy Director of Public Services. And then we have Deputy Director, Chief Financial Operating Officer, Dan Baer. And then we have special guests tonight. Tammy, I'm sorry, did I not mention you, Executive Assistant Tammy Jeffries? And then our special guests from Sylvan Way, who will present a mission moment on Library After Dark. We've got our fabulous manager, Ashley Oaksmith. We have Teen Services Librarian, Jaclyn Keating. We have Adult Services Librarian, Cindy Rivas-Garcia. And we have Youth Services Librarian, Kathleen Condeck. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Regarding Agenda Item 5, Public Comment, there are no requests to speak tonight, but I did want to acknowledge there were a couple of items of correspondence that were sent for inclusion in public comments that were not acknowledged in last month's meeting. That turned out to be due to a technical error on our website that actually prevented the board from receiving some correspondence. The technical issue has been resolved, and so therefore, we have a public comment, public correspondence, that was submitted around last month's board meeting that will be included in the minutes for public record that we're including in the Consent Agenda today. There is also a public correspondence that will be submitted in this board meeting's minutes for public record. I wanted to acknowledge that because there was some perception that the board intentionally ignored public correspondence, which we would absolutely never do. And in fact, the two pieces of correspondence directly influenced the agenda today. So thank you for your communication, thank you for your correspondence, and thank you for your support. So we'll go to Agenda Item 6. Tammy, can you advance to the next? There we go. Consent Agenda. I don't have my computer here, so, okay. All matters listed within the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired, items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular Agenda by request. That includes 6.01, minutes of the October 28-25 regular board meeting, which, as I just mentioned, also includes the public correspondence that was submitted for public record. 6.02, payment of October 2025 expenditures. And 6.03, surplus library materials withdrawn from the collection for October 2025. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items?
I move to approve.
Second?
Aye, second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll go to 7.01, Mission Moment, Library After Dark. Ashley, Cindy, Jaclyn, and Kathleen, welcome.
Thank you so much for the warm welcome. We're happy to be here, and thank you for your time. I'm Ashley Oaksmith, and with me is Cindy Garcia-Rivas, responsible for Adult Services at Sylvan Way, and Jaclyn Keating, responsible for our Teen Services, and Kathleen Condeck, responsible for Youth Services, all at Sylvan Way. And we're happy to be here tonight to share about a wonderfully successful program which we held at Sylvan Way in October called Library After Dark. We did not create the name Library After Dark. That's been used in public libraries across the country for what seems like ages. They're usually cocktail hours, networking events, that sort of thing. And we were looking for a way to celebrate summer learning, to celebrate a successful levy, to have a party, and to welcome people into our building. The four of us have only been together as a team for about a year and a half by that point, so it was also a really fun project for us to be able to work on together in this space that we were sharing and taking care of together, and with community that we were taking care of together. And so we decided on the name Library After Dark, but did it with a little bit of a twist, deviating from the traditional event, and it really made for a beautiful evening. We hung up string lights, and we'll have some photos to show you in a little bit. We had good food, desserts, mocktails, all by some local folks, restaurants and vendors and that sort of thing. We had music. We also had a unique dress code, which was inspired by a trend that's been online on social media for the last year of, "I have nowhere else to wear this." Yeah. And so rather than having people come out in just formal attire, let's have a little bit of fun. And they surely did. And so if you want to flip to the slide, that's wonderful. I will pass things off to Cindy to say a little bit more.
Hey, everyone. We are so grateful to the community partners who added their magic to the evening and helped us bring people together. For instance, Bremerton's first poet laureate, Tia Hudson, hosts an all-ages poetry workshop at Sylvan every month. We invited her to Library After Dark as our guest, but she turned around and offered to host a poetry corner for us instead. Her vision brought a cozy library nook to life, and amidst writing prompts and poetry books, folks tried their hand at composing a poem, a lot of them shared with me for the first time. And while I was chatting with some of the people drawn to that corner, I witnessed firsthand what can happen when we create space for community. Someone at the table recognized our very own Sandy Carlson as their childhood librarian. With tears in their eyes, this person shared that decades ago, the Sylvan Way Library had been their refuge, and Sandy had been the one to keep bullies at bay. They thanked Sandy for helping them make it through a very difficult time. It was an emotional moment for everyone at the table, and a beautiful reminder of the role that the library's been playing in Kitsap for decades. And with that, I will pass it off to Jaclyn.
So I organized trivia at this event, and After Dark provided a unique opportunity for adults under 21 to come and play, since that's often an activity at bars, and other adults who may not be comfortable in a bar setting. So that was really fun. We packed the head and ear room. I also forced folks to get on bigger teams of at least six, so forced them to mingle and also convince them that more brains means better chance of winning. So it was fun. Nobody got to be an exclusive team, and it also made it more comfortable for folks who may have come dressed by themselves or in a pair to sort of meet and mingle a little bit. Also, when we were planning this, we knew we wanted to have live music, and one of my volunteers I know is a musician and really into music, so I approached her and asked if she would like to play at the event. She plays saxophone, and she said absolutely. For a volunteer hour, she came and played, and it was really brave of her to play to an audience of all adults that she didn't know, and she knocked it out of the park, and it was great to provide that opportunity to her. Thank you. And I will pass it off to Kathleen.
Sylvan Way's adult patrons often participate in youth programming with their children rather than adult-specific programming. The evening was a great opportunity to get some of our regular patrons in for an adult program. In addition to various friends and neighbors, members of the various boards we serve on, and other community partners, everyone who attended had a really lovely time. A highlight for many attendees was my friend Monica's tarot readings, and hopefully, community partners like Monica can continue to support KRL going into 2026.
Monica made her own chicken tarot for us. And our very last community partner that joined us was Bremerton Krampus, which was a highlight, as you can see, and he made good friends with some robots that came as guests of the program. And we had 140 people at this event, which our building can hold many more, but it was full of community and social connection and groups that had not, as kind of described, had not until this point come together and knew each other. So there were a lot of people that were meeting for the first time, and they weren't all people that had engaged in our library programs in the past. Some folks, there was one gentleman and his father that would only come in for computer use. I would see him, but he brought his father in, and the two of them actually came to a program and they never had before. So we saw these wonderful moments of folks kind of coming out of their comfort zone and engaging in the library in a way that had never been done before. And I did want to mention, we heard, you know, time after time, hey, as people were filtering out, they all stayed late, and as they were filtering out, they said, hey, please do this again. But then they also said it online, which was really neat to read after. I did protect the privacy of everyone who posted, but there's some really neat comments. Joyce, if you can go one back. Kitsap Strong, who is a well-known community partner in the community, said, "Celebrating with Library After Dark at Sylvan Way," I just love what they said here, "finding various corners of social connection, from trivia to karaoke to yard games to mocktails, to being on the library books and more books for ages 18. Happy 80th." And then the next one. There were many, many of these. "All libraries should do this." I agree. And more often, someone responded. Another person, "You should do it again." And absolutely would have gone if I had known. So they were hearing about it, word of mouth, and said, oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Another person said it was a blast. And then finally, my daughter and I went to the After Dark. We had a fun time, and we really enjoyed the trivia time. The food was excellent. Thank you, KRL. I hope this is offered again. We will definitely come. And then the final one, I won't read the whole thing, but it was just joy and appreciation. Ran into so many fun folks, caught up with folks, and I loved this part. Her son stayed home sick, but he would have come if he could. The library's awesome. When he was about six, he said, "Everyone can feel rich at the library." And so we'll leave it at that. It was a really beautiful night. It was a gamble when we were creating it. We, you know, threw everything at the wall and saw what stuck, and it turned into this wonderfully seamless celebration of community, and we're pretty proud of it. So thank you all.
Thank you, team. And you actually answered one of the questions that I was going to ask, which was, did you see different patrons come in that you wouldn't normally see during the day? So that in itself is very cool. I imagine that, you know, people's work schedules don't always work out, they're not always able to take their kids during the day, they're too tired, understandably so, they've got lives to lead. So very cool that we were able to connect with a different group of people.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're exactly right. It was exactly that and more. Yep.
So are you going to plan on doing it again?
We hope so.
Is that $150,000?
$140,000. Yep. We did pre-registration, and even more folks came than that, and so it was, yeah, it was exactly right.
You know, listening to the presentation, this is really important, especially for our sobriety community, to have something to do. I've participated in the ones in, you know, actual bars, and it's a lot of fun, but to have something that's in the evening for folks to do that's good, clean fun, is really great, and it also addresses the loneliness epidemic at the same time. So, man, I would love to see this happen more. I'd definitely be there, for sure. How did you advertise this?
We have our amazing communications team advertise for us, and I think we have enough of a following and people looking for events, and then it was a lot of word of mouth. There was a lot of, hey, I'm going to this. Why don't you come with me?
Were you surprised at the $140,000, or did you think, oh, that should be?
Yeah, a little bit. You know, we thought maybe people would sign up, and then we wouldn't end up with the showing that we did. But no, when people started trickling in, I'm like, oh, this is happening. This is actually, you know, what we were hoping for. And so, and I think we only promoted for a couple of weeks, and so if people knew that we were doing this, we'd probably even get a greater turnout. And we also, because we were able to test out a variety of things like the trivia, now we can also do smaller programs, knowing that people will show up. And we have a pretty robust programming for all ages at Sylvan Way, but it gave us some kind of interesting data about what community needed, and so we're going to be doing more trivia and more things like that as well. So it, aside from Library After Dark, it actually told us some good information about what people are interested in.
I appreciate it. Home run, first time out. Congratulations.
Real quick, can I jump in for a second? I just really wanted to congratulate the team again. I attended the event, and it was eclectic, and I think that best describes what it was. It was a hodgepodge of everything, but that's not a diss for the program, because I think, to your point, Marwan, there was an epidemic of isolation and loneliness, and I think what I saw was that there was all these disparate people who were connecting around this idea that they could be in a library after dark and it to be a safe space for them. You know, for things like chess and tarot cards and just, you know, the music, you could just be alone if you wanted to, nobody bothered you, and then the trivia was out of control. I mean, at the end, there was a whole room of adults having good, clean fun playing trivia. And I think, you know, in terms of like the numbers of lasting, I'll say, and kudos to the three super librarians there, because I think, with the exception of Colleen, of co- I mean Kathleen, of course, she couldn't have kids there, but in terms of like having the community, you know, I saw people that I interacted with and Cindy's, her craft club, for instance, I saw a lot of those folks there. You know, as Jackie said, one of her volunteers, although I didn't know who she was, that really stuck out to me, because she was just playing alone, but the music was perfect. It went with the evening, it was a perfect vibe, and I think from the standpoint of like what we do in libraries, it's not about the numbers, it's about the level of engagement. And so while $140,000 in a building like that might not seem like a lot, you couldn't tell that it was $140,000 or less there. You thought it was probably more, just because of how busy the library was and how many people were engaged. So I think from the standpoint of connections and engagement, it was a huge success, and the answer is yes, we're going to do it again. We just need to find out, because I think we found something that works for the community, and we found something that works for a specific segment of the community, and that's what we're all about. If anything, libraries are good about experimentation, trying things, and if it doesn't work, it didn't hurt anything, you know? And so kudos to Ashley and the three super librarians. Thank you for making it a great night. I had a ball, and so I can't wait to come back again. Thank you. You knocked it out of the park.
That's great. Thank you. The Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, a few years ago, had a trivia night amongst the board members, and I just destroyed everybody so badly. We haven't played trivia since.
You invited.
Exactly. I also think Sylvan Way would make for a perfect escape room, but not like a one-hour, like a four-hour escape room. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will go to 7.02, Board Member Updates. Who would like to go first with updates?
I do not have any updates.
I'll just say, I didn't attend a library event specifically, but I was at Kingston Village Greens this weekend for celebrating Native American Heritage Month, and a lot of the librarians from the Kingston branch in the Village Greens came out and participated and interacted, and it was great to see them involved in the community and express an interest, and it was a really fun event, and everyone was super excited, so it was a good connection.
Great, thank you. Reminds me, I haven't been to the Kingston branch in a while. It's a fun branch.
Yeah.
I spent time with the Bainbridge Public Library, went to the BPL board meeting. Also, I'm up to speed on the installation of the solar panels and the closure, and also got to attend the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation Retreat, got to host the board at my house, and got to speak with Jason as well, talk about how things are going. So that was good. We'll go to 7.03, Finance Committee Report, which is actually Gina.
Yeah, so I pinch-hit tonight because we had a shortage of, we had some excused absences, but, so our operating budget for October is on target, and we have the draft operating budget for 2026 up, and we're going to do the tax certification vote for Jason to sign that tonight later on in the meeting, and I don't know if you had anything else to add, Dan, or anything?
No.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Again, that, thank you, Gina, and that ties into 7.04. Dan, confirming you do not have anything else to add to the financial report?
I do not. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Gina, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. We'll go to 7.05, Library Director's Report. Jason?
Thank you. Thanks for your time tonight, everybody. Appreciate you. So give a brief update on activities. You heard about Library After Dark. October's a big month for staff and our community. We had our second annual in-service day for teens, which focused heavily on the team-building Collaborate, plan our year out for the following year, and reconnect with our communities, particularly the communities that all of our libraries served. We designed that day to be mostly autonomous, except for a brief message in the morning from me, and it was a great chance to really embody what we're all about for at least the director's office and Deputy Director of Public Services. We got out and for the second year in a row, embodied our, the service aspect of what we do, and we volunteered in an organization, so that was very gratifying. We hope that that, as a tradition, will continue every year. And so big shout-out to Shannon, who picked out the place, KidVantage, and I thought it was very appropriate because of what was happening with the government shutdown. It really enabled us an opportunity to go in and not only be useful, but to see how our community has really risen up to help those who are suffering. And so it was an awesome opportunity to get involved in the community in a different way, and within our individual community within Bremerton, so I was happy to be able to do that. And overall, just a strong month for partnerships. I was invited to participate on the Central Kitsap School District Budget Advisory Committee, as well as the Bremerton School District Levy Advisory Committee, so happy to participate in both of those committees and be a part of those communities to help those organizations in those respects. And then I participated in the Friday Art Walk, where we had our 80th-year anniversary exhibit at the Kitsap History Museum. Big shout-out to Jeannie Allen and the whole communications crew. If you have not seen that exhibit, is it still, it's still here for the end of the year? I would encourage all board members to check it out. There are a couple pictures in the board page, one of Jeannie Allen posing in front of the exhibit, but it was a great opportunity to really delve into our 80-year history. Lots of pictures of folks like Tammy throughout the ages, and lots of other staff members who've been here for years, and so it was a great way to see how our library has connected all of our communities and have been a big impact. We talked about Library After Dark. Continuing the tradition of Halloween and our engagement with littles on Halloween. Halloween at Sylvan... Talk about it. Continue to be just an amazing event. The teams get... That's the heart of what we do. Mike is doing something weird, so that means I need to finish my report. So on the public services side, again, Halloween was awesome. We have announced the third-quarter recognition recipients, Isla Soto, Narda Hetland, M. Harris, Kayla O'Connor, Jaclyn Keating, who's here, congratulations on getting third-quarter recognition, and Davy Lagman. Their work represents collectively curiosity, equity, and exceptional service. And so I continue to be proud of the impact our frontline staff make and our back-of-house staff make, and we are nothing without them, and so congratulations to them. And then lastly, in terms of statistics, circulation continues to be strong. I think all of the engagement we've had around the levy, the 80-year anniversary, obviously, even still with planned closures like, you know, holiday... Doing crazy things. We still continue to be robust in terms of our engagement and our, and whatnot. So thank you. That's all I have. Mike's going to cut out. Any questions?
Yeah, Jason, I have an important question. You reminded me of Halloween, and I believe you were reading a children's book in a Spider-Man costume?
Um, yes, that is correct.
Is that every year, or do you change superheroes annually?
It's important to keep the costumes fresh. I think I was, have been a train conductor, not superheroes every year. I've been a train conductor, I've been the Black Panther, and I have been Superman. I was Superman this year, on the heels of watching the movie. So I don't know what I'll be next year, but it's, no, really, I appreciate being able to be, to be invited, to be able to do that. As all of you know, I was a Youth Services Librarian at one time, and, you know, it gives me an opportunity to really engage with youth and connect back to my roots in libraries, which were really spin around kids, and that's really at the heart of what we do. We serve, you know, the whole population, you know, really a cradle to grave, but it's important to be able to get out there every once in a while and connect with our patrons, so really grateful. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Does anybody have any more questions? Okay, thank you, Jason. We'll go to 9.01, Nominating Committee for 2026 President and Vice President. My role here as president is coming to a close at the end of the year, and we're actually going to, because we only have three of five members, we will table the nominating committee decision, who is going to be on the nominating committee offline after the meeting, so that everyone gets a chance to volunteer to participate. So for 9.02, 2026 Draft Operating Budget, this item is not for board vote this meeting, it's for information. So we'll go to Dan.
All right, and this item actually is tied into the next item after that, the Tax Levy Certification. The county requires us to submit a draft budget with a tax levy certification. Tax levy certification is actually a document instructing the county on what tax revenues to collect on our behalf in 2026. Normally, we would have had a public hearing before this meeting, but because the voters passed our levy, they have spoken, and that is the revenue that will be collected. So we're going to put, hopefully have a motion from the board to authorize Jason to submit the tax levy certification to the county by December 1st.
Got it. And that segues into 9.03, which you mentioned, which is the tax levy certification. Is there a motion for the Board of Trustees to authorize Jason to sign the letter of certification?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Motion passes. And we'll go to Shannon, 9.04, Off-Site Access Policy.
Yes, so this policy kind of, it's fairly simple. It really lays the groundwork for us to be able to think differently about serving underserved populations and partnering strategically throughout the community to improve access outside of our physical buildings. So the idea is placing collections in the community in a variety of ways, and we're able to do that with the support that we garnered through the levy.
That's great. Thank you, and it also nicely aligns with the ability to offer more services without creating so much infrastructure overhead in terms of like a new library with new maintenance. So I know that's something that KRL's been passionate about for a while. Jason, anything to add here?
No, I'm really excited about our ability to be able to serve underserved populations. I really want to congratulate Deputy Peterson. I'm very aligned with this policy. It's where I've spent the most time in my career, serving the underserved, so I'm really proud of this work and proud of the direction we're taking to serve the underserved. So thank you, Director Peterson.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the off-site access policy?
Motion to adopt the off-site policy.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. And we'll go to 9.05, Internet And we'll go to 9.05, Internet and Public Computer Use Policy. Jeannie?
There you go. Okay, so in response to some public feedback that we've had over the last several months, we took a look at our internet and public computer use policies. So this is not a new policy, this is a revision of a current policy. The current, the current policy that's in place was last reviewed in 2016. So as you know, a lot has changed in technology and internet and libraries in general in that time period. So with this policy, we've really clarified a lot of our language around internet and public computer use in our branches to make it a lot more clear, our intentions, and brought in a lot of our current practices that even though are, a part of our everyday work, weren't represented very clearly in our policy. So this policy clears up a lot of that and just makes it a lot easier for our public to see our commitment and our current practices.
Understood. Jason?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to dig more into a few aspects of the policy. And again, I want to thank my leadership team for their work, specifically Jeannie and Shannon, my policy advisors, for at least drafting this. And what I want to say really is, is yes, we are both responsive in this policy to our staff, who were very instrumental in kind of bringing this to us in terms of like being able to have policy that's clear and strong, that is protective of our youngest users. And also, I want to thank the parents who engaged with me, both via email and publicly. And this, because of both groups, we're stronger as an organization. As all know, and as I've repeatedly said, and I'll keep saying it, my heart is always with children. I have children, I'm a parent, I've worked with children my entire career. We're all about protecting children, but we're also about protecting all users. And so, I wanted to just talk about the strengths of this policy. And it's been guided with our legal team to help us, I think, create a really, a new policy. It's a revised policy, but I think new for us in terms of this policy really goes a long way at making clear what the internet is, what its limitations are, and also what its capabilities are and what our networks' capabilities are. So just real quick, legal requirements, the overall purpose was to align with the, our Child Internet Protection Act, which we are bound to follow in that we, the library sees E-rate funding, as well as it is strong to protect patron privacy. That's always going to be important for us. And it's important that users, when they are on our networks, that they're secure. Their data is secure and their data is private. And that's always going to be important. And so, the safety and comforter of all users, when people are in our libraries, we want to ensure that not only is their data safe, that, that anything they may be viewing is, first of all, the content is safe and appropriate for use, and it's also safe and appropriate for other users. And so, there's a balance there, because there's also an obligation for their freedom to view, per the American Library Association, to make sure that the library isn't censoring materials. Having said that, because we are a CEPA-compliant organization, our filtering is, we have, we have a commitment to intellectual freedom, but because we are beholden to the Child Internet Protection Act, we do have strong filters on all of our computers, and this stipulates that per CEPA. So it aligns with the Child Internet Protection Act, that is in the filtering section, which defines the prohibitions and illegal content, harassment attempts, attempts to gain authorized access. And it includes a process for adults who need to disable filtering if necessary. But having said that, I am very happy with where we landed on this policy. It addresses directly concerns from patrons, it directly addresses concerns of, you know, our internal community as well. And it also addresses concerns that I had about clarity of the policy and some of our other staff and leadership team did too. Our policy was a very old one, and it was, I think, really created when, basically when the internet was unveiled by this organization. And if not then, not too far after that. And so it was really important. I think part of what I've been doing as a leader has been looking at all of our policies, but there are a lot. And I'm glad that while not happy about the way this came about, I am happy, I always say that, you know, where you have problems, there are opportunities. And so I'm happy that this will be, we've strengthened our network overall for all users. And so it's really important that we did that. And so it preserves their patron privacy, and that's the most important thing. And I think what the board should take away from it, it's a balanced approach. It, one, protects children in public spaces, which is always going to be important for not only me, but this entire team. It upholds adult access to freedoms, and it also avoids overreach in the lawful content access. And so I'm really happy about this policy. It really strikes a good middle ground on being able to be safe. And if folks want to be able to disable filters for research purposes, then there'll be a process for doing that. And there'll be a process in a safe space to do that, depending on what they want to view. But with that, I always want to say, with new policies comes, you know, opportunities for training. We are about to go into a year of customer service. Customer service is always our base, and it's always what we strive to do. And so it is a real opportunity to really look at all of our policies and procedures and make sure that we're all aligned, not necessarily all on the public front, but also what are we doing as leaders to be good, you know, customers to our folks like this team here, who have to go out and enforce these policies? Because if we're not good customers to them, we're not making policy clear that they can interpret it correctly and be able to do the right thing, then we're not doing our jobs. And so ultimately, that's why we're here. And we can talk all day about how it got here and what happened, and really addressing everybody that, that was involved. For the staff involved, thank you. And for the parents involved, it was a pleasure to meet with them and to talk through what are some of the, the experiences they've had in, in some of our libraries. And as a parent and a patron and a library leader, I'm, look, I'm a library user, so at the end of the day, I want the libraries to be safe and accessible and useful for everyone involved. So that is the policy. Are there any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Jason, for explaining. I do have one question. A parent, or somebody comes in and says, this person is looking at content that makes me or my children uncomfortable, it's inappropriate. What, can you clarify the process for a patron and what staff is empowered to do?
Yeah, so.
This will come up.
Yeah, so first and foremost, the, the policy is, no policy is going to work if the companion policies, and especially for this one, there's a, you know, we have our patron code of conduct, and that's going to be important. Any library activities that disrupts the enjoyment of others to use a library, there's an avenue to be able to talk about what that thing is. Now, if we're talking about objectionable content online, it depends on the content. If it's somebody looking at riots, you know, if that's offensive to somebody, you know, we can certainly ask someone, hey, you're making another person uncomfortable with that. But there are opportunities to engage in a real conversation about what activity is disturbing others. Now, with regard to this policy, there are filters in place which will prohibit people from watching content that is, one might determine is objectionable on the grounds of it being obscene material, right? And so with regard to anything that is against the law, that's not going to be able to be filtered through this. And so, and a filter is only as good as, you know, the, the software that is, that it's running on. And so there are people who can get around those filters, and we're not promising that there will be, there will not be inadvertent viewing. What we're saying is that our network is strengthened, and we've greatly reduced the opportunities for that to happen. And should they happen, because, you know, life isn't perfect, things will happen, that's where we are really talking about the customer service aspect of it. And so, to the extent that we have lots of staff, newer staff, especially since I've started, and we're always, you know, it's a fluid process. We have staff leaving and coming. Training has to always be at the forefront. And I take it very personally when we're not, especially me, it's, it, it all comes, and as I told the parents, and I've told the board, it's not on the staff, it's on me. If they aren't prepared to do their jobs, then ultimately it's my fault. And so I take it very personally. So my goal is to make sure that we're strengthened on the customer service side, and we know how to do that in a way that is compassionate and that we're protecting other people's privacy, but we're also balancing it with safety. So the answer to your question is a conversation. And it's, it's a conversation because we have policies that protect the users either way. The users that are viewing content and the users that are complaining about people viewing the content. And there's a balance. And so, from the aspect of though parents, I'm going to speak directly to it and not beat around it. If somebody's watching something like pornography, based on our ability to, based on our requirement to be CEPA compliant, that shouldn't be available on any computer. If somebody wants to do something like that and wants to disable those filters, then they have a right to ask for it, and we have to legally disable that in a safe space. And so from that, we'll be looking at where can that happen in terms of the safety of it, so that people aren't inadvertently viewing it. So we've got a little bit of work cut out on us, and we've got to work with all of our managers to determine what that process will be like. And, but for the immediate future, I think what we're applying here won't affect really anybody who's coming into the library to do their normal activities. Anybody who wants to engage in anything that would be determined to be something that's objectionable along the pornography content, and they'll have to request that. And that's consistent with what other libraries have done. And so I want to also state that we're not violating anybody's privacy rights, because we are a CEPA compliant, and if they want to view things that are within the legal framework of the law, although they may be things that are objectionable to us, they have a right to certainly do that. And we're not going to stand in their way of do that. We're also going to balance that with public safety. So we're not going to allow anybody to do that in an area or in a section of the library where we might have youth. And so I know if I want, had my kids in the library, I wouldn't want that. And so I don't have all the answers for how we're going to be able to create those zones, but for the immediate future, all of our computers will be CEPA compliant, as they should have been. But again, no world is perfect, and certainly what we've discovered is that through a legal review, we've made our policies more stringent and more compliant based on what our legal obligations are.
Thank you. And one more thing to clarify, this, the new policy is, is pretty closely in line with what King County is doing, correct?
Yeah, similar, exactly. Correct. Yeah, we kind of, what we did is, we looked at, and Deputy Peterson looked at a lot of different policies, and I want to give her a lot of credit for being proactive and looking at neighboring policies. And no policy, again, is perfect. No policy will protect our users. A policy is only as good as the people implementing the policy, than the tools that are in place to make those policies work. And it all has to be in conjunction with all of our departments. IT, you know, us as leaders, public services, will all be working to ensure that everything is working together in order to make sure the policy is clear, it's enforced, and not only that, that the library is just a place where everybody can enjoy it and use it in the, in the way that's useful for them. And so it's a balance, and it's always going to be a balance in the library between the safety of others and the, and the rights of folks. There are plenty of things that I think people would find objectionable that is outside of the viewing realm. There's a lot that people find objectionable in the reading realm too. And so, you know, the difficult part about this, I think for everybody, is, you know, we have to, in the library, be agnostic with regard to politics, we have to be agnostic with respect to, you know, censorship in terms of like, we don't censor, right? And so that even includes content online, but we do have an obligation for safety. And so that's where this policy is really driven. And it's also driven by our parent organization, the American Library Association. But it is also, again, the balance is also that we provide safe environments. And so, you know, it's true that library has all types of users, it's a public place. And inherently, public places like libraries, you know, and there are other places like libraries where you have a wide swath of humanity that's in it. And so I think for any place that's public, people have to take certain care, you know, with watching their belongings, with making sure that, you know, they're really just aware of, of what's happening. Because you don't have to have a membership. We, we don't know everybody that's coming into the library. And so there are frequently things that we have to encounter and that we have to respond to, to make the library safe for everybody. And this is just one aspect of that. But for the immediate future, we are CEPA compliant, our filters are set at the max level, because CEPA requires that all libraries who are getting E-rate funding have to set their filters to the max level on all computers. And so that will be the case with us. We will have to retroactively do that, because that is a requirement under the law. And so we will not be able to compromise anybody else's right to enjoy any other thing on the internet, and we'll have a way to, to be able to disable that per request.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions?
No, I appreciate how comprehensive it is and the fact that it does address an enforcement provision, so that it has steps, yeah.
Yeah, it does have steps. And again, we, we have to, we'll be working diligently on what that looks like. And, you know, of immediate concern for us is to, and it's always a balance. Again, it's, it's something we take seriously. We are really excited about where we're going in the future and a big, you know, I believe in Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If the library is in a safe space and people don't feel safe in it, then we can't do anything else. And that's both for our staff who work in it and our patrons who enjoy the library. And, you know, the library's always been a place where youth have been served and have been served well. And I don't want that to be compromised in any way. And our staff don't either, nor do our leadership. And so I think this gives us the ability to make sure in an age where we're really in the information age, and the computer and the internet and, and just technology's a big part of what we do, we're always going to be updating and changing policy and making it more relevant per the times. So this isn't the last time we'll be before you with a policy that might need to be adapted based on the times. This is just the latest such case. And so, again, the last thing I'll say before I ask the board to, to make a vote on this particular policy is that I'm glad it came about because it allowed us an opportunity to see where we had gaps in our policy. So again, my, my thanks is in advance for the board, and I hope this is a policy you'll pass, and to our staff and to the parents who reached out to me. I am here because they support the library, and so I have an obligation to respond when these things happen. And so I consider it an honor to be able to respond and to do something about it. And, and what I promised was that there were a lot of things we could do, and I would do something that was within the legal framework of the law, that also was able to protect the youngest of users and to protect those who also want to be able to have the freedoms to, to view. And I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the Internet and Public Computer Use Policy revisions?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
A second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. Thank you. I know this was, this was a lot to get through, Jason, but appreciate the public feedback that helped us get here.
Absolutely.
So we'll go to housekeeping, future meeting dates. Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 16th, where we will have our Long Range Strategic Planning Committee meeting. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.